And with that being said, I'd like to welcome you to the committee of the whole meeting for June 8, 2021 for the municipality of Jasper. And as it's 9:31, I will call us to order. Councillors, you have the agenda before you. Are there any additions to today's agenda? councillor Demota.
Yeah, if I could add for under new business 8.5, just an update from administration on where we're at with support for the skate park.
So that is a request to add agenda item number 8.5 as a skate park update. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you councillor Demota. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you Mayor Ireland. All in favor? That is carried. Before us are the minutes of the May 25 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any adjustments, corrections to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 25, 2021 Committee of the Whole as presented? Thank you councillor Jono, all in favor? And that's carried. Agenda item number five brings us to presentations and we have no presentation scheduled for this morning. Thank you, Mr Given. And agenda item number six brings us to business arising from the minutes. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath. I just wanted to return to presentations because I can't think of another place to fit this in. And I just wanted to remind the public that back in April, April 20, I think, council by motion proclaimed the week of June 7th to 13th to be seniors week in Jasper. We are now in that. Sorry, I just had some sort of a malfunction, but we are now in seniors week and I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize that and to thank all of the seniors in our community for all the service they have and do continue to provide to the community. And I know there are lots of opportunities for others to show their gratitude and support. And so I encourage the community to get behind that and thank our seniors. Thank you for that opportunity, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that Mayor Ireland. And there is some wonderful initiatives being presented to the community this week from Community Outreach Services and from the municipality of Jasper and from so many organizations within our community. And as you stated, Mayor Ireland, much gratitude to all of the seniors and to the path that they have built and where they have brought this community that we have the opportunity of enjoying. So thank you very, very much. Moving on to agenda item number six, business arising from the minutes. There is no business. Agenda item number seven takes us to policy and governance. Is there any council discussion on council strategic priorities or business plan? Hearing nothing, we will move into new business. Agenda item number eight. 8.1 Input for the Draft Jasper National Park Management Plan.
Sure. Thank you very much Deputy Mayor McGrath. I'll introduce this one. As council is well aware, Parks Canada has undertaken the process of renewing the Jasper National Park of Jasper Management Plan. It is a high level document in the staff report. You can see where that document lies in the sort of relative order of precedence just below the legislation of the National Parks Act and its regulations. So it is an important document. It is high level. And so there's sort of this balance within the document that it is important in that it influences the documents below it, but it doesn't necessarily get to the level of specificity of some of the issues that might be on council's mind. Administration has reviewed the document specifically focused on section 7.1, which focuses in on the community of Jasper management area, as it's called in the document. And administration has attached some recommended changes to the language. You'll see some inclusions that we made reflective of council's strategic priorities. The advice here is that we forward this to Parks Canada as the municipality of Jasper's formal input into the plan. I would, you know, I think we need to recognize that while the municipality of Jasper may suggest something, Parks may or may not accept it. That doesn't mean we shouldn't ask for it. And so in particular, we have increased the level of consultation with the municipality and collaboration by including specific terms that say that the municipality should be included in decision making. And I think probably the highlight the items for council reflective of council strategic priorities would be under management area objective 1.1, adding a new second target. That would be that Parks Canada and the municipality of Jasper work toward transitioning land use planning and development authorities in the town site to the municipality by 2030. And the other major one would be in management area objective 1.5, adding a new second bullet that Parks Canada and the municipality of Jasper work toward the elimination of the requirement for the municipality to pay land rent by 2025. So there are other items there. I think those are the ones that are most directly reflective of council strategic priorities. And to be frank, probably the biggest asks. But administration's view is that council should be advocating for these at every step, both in public documents like this and behind the scenes with advocacy through the national parks system and through the federal government system. These are here for council consideration. Ultimately, the advice from administration is that should committee be supportive of these or have additional that we make a motion that committee approve this input and recommend the council forward it to Parks Canada formally. With that, Deputy Mayor McGrath, I'll open it up to council discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr Given. We are in committee, so feel free to have some dialogue and discussion around this item. Councillors, your input. Councillor Butler.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor McGrath. Mr Given, I appreciate very much the work that went into this and I have to say I'm impressed with the suggestions that have been made. They honestly reflect a lot of conversations that have been had over the years, many different venues. So I appreciate the astuteness of administration in picking these items out. I only really have one question. That is on the question of the new target of transitioning land use planning and development. I'm interested in how it was that what I see is quite a fairly far out target date of 2030 was chosen there as opposed to, for example, the land rent target, which is four years out, 2025. I assume some thinking went into that and I'm just wondering the rationale behind what seems to me to maybe be a very far out target on that issue.
Sure. Yeah, Deputy Mayor McGrath for councillor Butler. The difference between the two are a couple of factors. First, that the transition of land use planning to the municipality would require certain capacity building within the municipality. So if we contrast that with the elimination of land rent, if there was a way to do that within the park system or the federal government to eliminate land rent, I mean, they could do that tomorrow and it wouldn't require the municipality to hire any extra staff or build any new skills. It just would mean that we would be able to keep more of our local taxpayers' dollars here in the municipality working on municipal services. In contrast, contrast that to land use planning, which if there was a decision made tomorrow to say municipality of Jasper, you now have land use planning authority. We would need to pass a number of different bylaws. We would need to hire a significant number of new staff. And we would need to develop a number of new internal processes, which frankly, we just don't have today. And so the difference in the timelines is that really about organizational readiness on behalf of the municipality of Jasper. Frankly, we wouldn't be ready tomorrow to take over land use planning. We could be ready and I think this target suggests that we should all, the municipality and parks, be planning for that transition if it happened before 2030. And that's why the phrasing is by 2030, not, you know, waiting until 2030. If we had a commitment to work towards that, it would allow the municipality the time to build the in-house skills and resources that we would need to undertake that activity. And that's the difference between that and the elimination of land rent, which if Parks wanted to do it tomorrow, we would be happy to accept.
Thank you. I appreciate the insight.
Thank you, Mr Given. Thank you councillor Butler. Comments, questions from other councillors? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath. I share with councillor Butler appreciation for the work that's gone into this. Thank you, Mr Given and staff for reflecting what has been on council's minds. In any event, I think similar to councillor Butler, I appreciate that it will take time to have the discussion and then to position ourselves to accept land use planning and development if that were to come. But even recognizing that time is necessary, I'd be more comfortable with just making the statement and eliminating the date. It just seems to suggest that this can be put off, even though it does say by 2030. I would like to see that discussion start more quickly. I wanted though to turn to the management area objective 1.3. And while I really appreciate the nuance of eliminating the phrase limits to development and focusing on town site boundary. I wonder whether we might add as a specific target measure, a commitment to review limits to growth and a specific reference to the commercial cap on development. Those are matters that are underscored in legislation. So the highest ranking document in terms of the hierarchical list that you gave us is the National Parks Act and it says that every community must have a growth management plan and references the one that we have and it has specific limits to the size of our commercial core. And every every document below that must adhere to the one above. And so it becomes almost an impossibility at this level to get engaged in specific discussions about the cap, but that is going to absolutely hamstring our community as we move forward. So from my perspective, in order to get that legitimately on the table, this would be a document that ought to recognize the need at least for that discussion. So we then have some opportunity to engage in a meaningful discussion about the commercial cap. So my suggestion is that it would fit within that particular objective. But rather than just the general statement where you've crossed out limits to development, including a specific target to engage with council and the community to review limits on growth and in particular, the commercial cap.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Butler.
Thanks. I appreciate that point and I was looking at that line in the same vein. I, the comment I was going to make and I would just add when we, to Mayor Ireland's comments, when we rework this section would be that I would not like to see all reference to limits to development stricken or, yeah, stricken from our submission. I think it is important that as council, we recognize that there is a need for limits to development. While we may, we're not satisfied with the existing limits to development, let's be sure that we are recognizing that limits to development are important. And as Mayor Ireland said, we would like to have a conversation around what those limits might look like in future. But I would hate for anyone to take the impression that town council would think that no limits to development other than the existence of the town site boundary would be satisfactory to us. I also wanted to pick up on Mayor's point on the issue that I mentioned earlier. That target date. I struggle with that too. I simply eliminating a target date would leave us with a phrase that may be just seen as aspirational in nature and not really a target. So I don't know what to do there. We could move the target forward. We could just instead of saying simply by 2030, we could say no later than 2030. Or we could include some language suggesting that conversations and discussions should get underway in some timeframe, because honestly, one of the difficulties we faced, I think everyone would acknowledge is even beginning the conversation. So maybe that could be nuanced toward suggesting some timeframe for having realistic conversations around that issue as well as some. I would like to see some sense of a target date. I would hate to see it dropped altogether. So those are the thoughts I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Butler. Councillor Demota.
Well, I'd like to thank administration and Mr Given for the work and the detail behind this. And I know that I sound repetitive when I say those things, but there is a lot of work that gets done behind the scenes and I'm always appreciative of the scope. And anyway, the points that Mr Mayor had brought up and councillor Butler as well are some of the sentiment that I was thinking about. And another thing that I wanted to consider was maybe adding a decision date. And then maybe have a transition deadline, because I think that pushing things back, you know, to 2030 is a bit far out regardless of, I understand from what Mr Given has said that it'll take us some time to get there. But I would write, I would rather aim for a closer date for a decision. And then, you know, having with the thought of being successful, having some sort of target transition date where we would take over. So personally, I'd like to see that done by the end of next term of council, regardless of who's on there. I think that having a similar target date to the land rent as far as having a decision made and then maybe, you know, roll out, have a few years to work on that administratively. After that with, with an end date, a little bit closer to where we are now than 2030, but that's just an opinion of mine. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Demota. Mr Given.
Thanks Deputy Mayor McGrath. Yes, thanks council members and Mayor Ireland. Appreciate the feedback. That's why this is here. I think the majority, I've captured the majority of the feedback and believe that we can incorporate that in our revision to come to council. So if council is generally satisfied with the other items, I have captured the discussion around the targets around land use planning and development transition and have some ideas of how we can propose that to council. I appreciate the discussion around management area objective 1.3 and the intent to continue to acknowledge the special nature of Jasper. And I would say that we can continue to do that, even if we strike the term limits development. Because the statement continues, go on to say, and preserve Jasper's small mountain community and distinctive built heritage contributing to the, you know, and so it, so there is a qualification there that says, we're, you know, we're not going to change the fundamental nature of Jasper. So for council consideration, when you see that again, consider whether that is satisfactory to maintaining that point. I think really here is the idea that new community development and redevelopment continue to respect the existing town site boundary communicates that there is not an intent to expand, geographically expand the municipality of Jasper. It's, it I think is supportive of the additional point raised by Mayor Ireland of a target that specifically speaks to active engagement with the municipality of Jasper to review limits to growth and the cap on commercial development. So the overarching statement in the management area objective, I think is supportive of that additional target that the mayor referenced. So I believe I can capture those. Administration would be happy to do so. And if council satisfied to bring this forward as revised to the regular council meeting.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr Given. One question that I was thinking, I'm not sure if it would fit into this document or not, but we have done some advocacy on the the need for revision of the need to reside legislation. Is this somewhere where it could potentially fit or is that somewhere separate that we should continue advocating?
You know, I would have to defer to somebody who has longer Jasper experience. I believe that that likely is in the national legislation. I don't know that for a fact and I had missed it because it wasn't identified in council strategic priorities. Really the screen that administration used was to look at council strategic priorities and reflect those strategic priorities in this feedback.
Great. Councillor Butler, I saw your hand.
Thanks very much. One last point. I just, Mr Given, like to be clear that highlighted areas are changes, but the the bullet points that are not highlighted are those already, are those taken from existing statements?
Yes, councillor Butler. So this is, this is the existing state. If there is not highlight, it was not changed by administration, not suggested for change by administration.
And then, so those are quotes from the management plan?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments, council?
I see Mayor Ireland has his digital hand up.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath and thank you, Mr Given. I'm not sure how I'm coming across on the screen anymore. I had to change devices. I just wanted to make a comment about objective 1.5, which underscores collaboration and I just raised for council's consideration whether it might be again worthwhile identifying a specific target about collaboration with Parks Canada regarding some form of public transit or intercept lots or something of the nature. It's a matter that has legs already, as we've seen, and has been discussed over time and will again in the future. And so again, if we could nail down as a specific target, collaboration with respect to the transportation of visitors to and within our community, I think that would help discussions as we move forward.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea, Mayor Ireland. And it ties in perfectly from the recommendations from the Economic Task Force. Would there be value in tying in the other recommendation from the Economic Task Force of the Destination Development Plan? Councillor Butler, you have your hand up?
In answer to your question, I'd be hesitant to start picking from those recommendations at this point. And adding them in, they have not been subjected to council discussion yet, though I did want to say, I think that's a really good catch on Mayor Ireland's part with respect to public transportation. Beginning that conversation, I think is something that council has identified as being a necessity to look at in coming years. So I'm comfortable with that, but wouldn't really be comfortable in starting to dive through the Economic Task Force recommendations at this point. But I sure support the public. Well, one more, thanks.
Sorry, I spoke for a while there, while muted. Thanks, Mr Given. And Mr Given, would there be a plan to have this before us next week?
If committee makes a motion. So the intent here, the recommendation from administration would be that committee recommend council formally approve the submission of input to Parks Canada on the draft management plan for Jasper National Park as amended. And so I just appended that as amended to reflect that administration will capture the changes suggested by council here, and that would be reflected in the revised one that would come to the council meeting next week. Again, just to sort of formally set up that process where committee is saying, yes, we've seen this. Yes, we agree. We believe administration has heard us and we're ready to send this forward for formal approval from council.
Thank you, Mr Given. Councillor Keller-Empe.
Just wondering, would this be captured under the cap? Like we've talked a lot about CN having a lot of our services that were supposed to be moved to S block. Should that be just left under the cap or should we make a separate point on that? Because going back, S block earlier was supposed to have no cap and all those industries were supposed to be able to set up here, but now they're part of the cap. Would that be part of that conversation or would it be separate?
Mr Given.
Thanks Deputy Mayor McGrath for councillor Keller-Empe. I believe with the additional point raised by Mayor Ireland of that Parks Canada should engage with the municipality of Jasper to review limits to growth and the cap on commercial development. I think that kind of target, that kind of language would create the opening for the specific discussion that you're talking about councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Keller-Empe and thank you, Mr Given. Is there councillor prepared to present the motion as read by Mr Given? Councillor Butler.
Sure. Thank you. I'll make that motion. I think it's, we, I think we're likely to be satisfied with what we see next week once the proposed changes amendments have been added. And of course, if not, we can always at that time decide to refer back to committee if we really think it's more. But I think we've had adequate conversations here, so I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Butler. Is there a need to have that motion reread? Everyone understands the question? All in favor? That is approved. We will see that before us on June 15. Agenda item number 8.2 Covid Relief Restricted Reserve Scope Inquiry.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor McGrath. Council, I think, is well aware of this discussion, so I will sort of skip to the point. At the May 11 meeting, council reviewed an initial scope inquiry RFD and directed administration to return to committee with additional information. At that time, committee said, well, you know, rather than sort of picking broad categories, we'd like to see recommendations on all categories. And so administration has attempted to do that here, recognizing that council members may be able to identify other ideas. But since that May 11 meeting, we have also received the recommendations from the Economic Recovery Task Force that outlined how the municipality might support recovery from the pandemic and increase the community's economic resiliency into the future. So administration has attempted to identify some concepts that, and identify as some way of evaluating the concepts against one another, because if they were concepts alone without some evaluation of some other evaluation criteria, it would be challenging to consider one against the other when they can be so radically different. So in the attached document, you will see essentially the long list where administration has attempted to reflect ideas that were in the Economic Recovery Task Force recommendations. We have attempted to, at a high level, and again, these are at a high level, identify approximate time it would take to start up or deliver on any of the items. We've identified in relative terms whether they are high, moderate or low cost. We have attempted to assess the relative complexity of the recommendation from low, moderate to high. We have attempted to evaluate the relative impact of the, of the recommendation again from low, moderate to high. And we have, again, attempted to evaluate the reach, meaning how how many people or businesses would the recommendation touch? And in that category, we said that there is some concepts maybe more targeted in nature, that there is intentionally a very specific class or group that the recommendation would be focused on. There are some that would be narrow in scope and narrow, narrow versus targeted. Targeted is intentionally picking a group that you're try attempting to to impact. Narrow is that the the effort is not necessarily intentionally targeted, but it just doesn't impact that that broader range of the community. Where broad is the highest evaluated in reach, in that it would impact large swaths or large sectors of the community or the whole community. Some of those relative evaluations, especially from one to the other, could absolutely be seen to be subjective. Council members may have different relative priorities. But by doing this, administration was able to identify some first tier concepts and some second tier concepts if council was interested. But the resort report was presented to you without that evaluation, recognizing that there is a bit of a subjective nature to some of this. And it is here for council's discussion. Administration would look for some direction on which, if any, of these items council would wish administration to do additional work on. As you can see, there are a lot of different concepts here. And developing the paperwork or forms or strategy behind any one of them would be a task in and of itself. And so it is not possible for administration to go and work on all of these. We essentially need council to prioritize and identify which of these or any other items you would wish administration to further refine for use of the COVID Recovery Reserve. So it's here for council discussion and information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given, and thank you for the excellent report. I found it extremely valuable to to be given this level of information. Any questions and discussion from council? Councillor Butler?
Thanks very much, and thank you, Mr. Given, for the evident amount of work and thinking that has gone into this. I want to start out with just a question to, for clarification and understanding. I'm I'm not clear on what is intended under the cost column. It seems to me that the money we spend of that fund is the money we spend. And so I don't really understand what is meant by high versus low cost. Are you thinking of the cost of implementation? So we would use a portion of the money just to administer and implement? Or are you thinking of the proportion of the approximately 1.1 million dollars that we would take to accomplish the stated goal? What's your thinking there? Thank you.
Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor McGrath for Councillor Butler, it's the second Councillor Butler. The, as council knows, we have a limited amount of funds in that reserve. And so it is the evaluation of high, moderate, or low is what percentage of the funds would need to be dedicated towards that that concept to really be worthwhile? For example, I'll contrast two. One of the items is described as using the funds to advance the construction of new housing units through JCHC or others. That's evaluated as a high cost item. And when we're talking about a new multifamily dwelling, you know, we are talking in the hundreds, if not, you know, to really advance something. If we want to advance a new apartment building, we probably should spend a whole million dollars, you know, or a significant chunk of the million dollars. We can contrast that with waiving business license fees. We could probably waive all business license fees in the community for, you know, under a hundred thousand dollars. And so the relative cost or amount of the reserve that we would use to accomplish either of those differs.
Thank you, Mr. Given, and thank you, Councillor Butler. Councillor Demota?
Thank you. I see that there's a recommendation here for lobbying effort. And I'm I'm all about, you know, trying to to get as much mileage as we can with with the least amount of investment or making, you know, your dollar work a little more for you down the road. So, you know, I do appreciate kind of like the the broader scope ideas that will help our community as a whole for the future. And, you know, again, I I know that I've been banging the drum about striking while the iron's hot. And I believe that maybe exploring some advocacy for resort municipality status or, you know, broadening and increasing our recognition as a special resort area within the province. We've already had some recognition through the most funding that we are different than other municipalities and face different challenges. So I think that as far as having the opportunity for having greater access to greater funding in the future, that, you know, going for land rent is is one thing. But I think that we could have the opportunity to multiply our investment exponentially by pursuing other efforts within the province. And down the road, I think that type of investment might bring more money to the community. So I would be more in favor of exploring something like that on a provincial level. Having said that, I do have another question on one of the recommendations, and that was to support grants to support enhanced marketing for local business. Just expanding on that through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Given.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor McGrath, to Councillor Demota. First, just let me say that these are our concept presented for council consideration only. None of these are recommendations. It's really up to council to narrow the scope. The, you know, administration was attempting to identify the 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 long list, if if you will. And and we're asking council to provide some recommendation on how we would narrow that list. But these are, yeah, essentially that that long list for council consideration. In terms of the the grants for marketing, a number of communities have initiated through COVID marketing grants that supported local businesses by helping them develop or enhance their marketing plans. And this would be, in the context of Jasper, I think we need to be specific that this isn't about marketing necessarily to visitors. Tourism Jasper and a number of other grant programs really support our tourism-related and visitor-related industries in terms of their marketing to out of region, you know, to to encourage visitors to come to Jasper and to use the amenities and services here and then the businesses here. This would be more focused on helping other local businesses that don't get that kind of support, that can't go to Travel Alberta for co-op marketing dollars to develop or enhance their local marketing initiatives to help promote their businesses. So just a little bit of a contrast, because I know in Jasper, when we think about marketing grants, we probably think about it in the context of the tourism industry. These would be more focused on local businesses that would be marketing within the region rather than outside of the region.
And if I may expand on that, please, thank you, Mr. Given. The, and then there's another one, the concept here is partner to develop a destination management plan. And I don't know if that coincides with what you just said, but, you know, understanding that we have a tourism entity already, a development in tourism Jasper. I just wanted to to get more information on the idea behind that one.
Yeah.
Mr. Given?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor McGrath. So, Councillor Demota, this concept would be very much supported by Tourism Jasper. As I understand it, and it was was related through the Economic Recovery Task Force, which this was a part of the recommendations of the Economic Recovery Task Force. A destination management plan is intended to be an overarching document that is supported by a wide variety of stakeholders within the community. And so is an overarching community plan, if you wanted to call it that, but looks at issues that would be typically outside of core municipal infrastructure and municipal operations and also somewhat outside, outside of the typical destination marketing that Tourism Jasper might do. I think the idea is to start to bring together the concept behind destination marketing and tourism and travel-related issues and bring those into a holistic plan that marries it with the development of local guidelines and services and programming and infrastructure. Tourism Jasper has related that, and you'll see this reflected in terms of the relative cost. They have suggested that they have funding to be able to do this. That's why this is reflected as a low cost and why this is reflected as an item where we would partner. I think a small amount of dollars and commitment from the municipality of Jasper to participate in that process and to be a a nominal supporter financially would it would really kick off that initiative. And so it is fully supported by Tourism Jasper.
Thank you, Mr. Given, thanks, Councillor Demota. Councillor Keller-Empe?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. Question from Mr. Given, the rent subsidy program for housing, can you give me an idea of what's behind that?
Sure, thanks, Deputy Mayor McGrath, through, sorry, through Deputy Mayor McGrath to Councillor Keller-Empe. So there are, I believe, many examples of rent subsidy programs where individuals or families below certain income thresholds are provided with a subsidy to enable their, them to afford their rent. That subsidy can be either paid directly to the renter or to the owner of the property. I'm not fully aware of the amount that JCHC currently engages in this, but it is a well-established concept that's reflected in many other communities and could be possible here. Administration has reflected that as a high complexity, given that that it's not something that we, you know, we don't have an existing widely available rent subsidy programs, would be creating a new program from scratch. It would be highly targeted in that it would be obviously focused on individuals most in need. But for those individuals, it would obviously could have the potential to be a very high impact by enabling them to better afford their their accommodation. So, yeah, that that's the overall concept there would be the municipality essentially setting aside a pool of money with which we could provide direct rent subsidies either to the to the individual or to the property owner to lower the individual's rent cost.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Thank you, Councillor Keller-Empe, thank you, Mr. Given. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I'm struggling a bit, and I will concede that upfront, and it's not the fault of administration or Mr. Given. I I really do appreciate that we asked for a full list of options and we have it. And now the the challenge begins for us. There are a couple of preliminary questions I have, though I, I think that it is safe for me to assume that any one of these options are a proper use of the most money that we have. I think technically we've spent it all already, so this is just other money. So there aren't any parameters, and I see you nodding, so that's a safe assumption. Thank you for that. When we established the COVID Relief Fund, it was my understanding that we wanted to recognize as a principle that the impacts of of the pandemic have been disproportionately realized on members of the community and businesses in the community. So we wanted to have a fund that was not necessarily broad-based but could be targeted to take into account those who were disproportionately affected. And so I am inclined to think in terms of more targeted relief and less broad relief. It's debatable, because of course, you know, the the euphemism is a rising tide lifts all boats, but not those that have a really short anchor and are stuck and get flooded as things go up. So I I think we have an obligation to try and and do what we can for those who were disproportionately affected. And I think there are some businesses hurting more than others. And so to the extent we can get some targeted relief, I favor that. The other general question that I have is, with respect to all of these, has there been any thought put to whether or not the goal could be achieved with the money available? Or would we be looking at continued funding in subsequent years? So I I take just as an example, third from the bottom, establish a cultural program of position within municipal staff. Well, you might get that set up under the COVID Relief Fund, but once you create that position, would it be a continuing position funded by taxpayers? And is that what we're looking to do with COVID relief funding? And there may be other, other issues that are are similar. And there may be some where we could take the the whole amount, the 1.1 million, and not quite get the job done. So investing in affordable housing, for example. So again, there there's another level of analysis, I think, that is on the shoulders of council to to try and assess whether it's worth putting a little bit of money toward one of these options when we know that that won't get us to the end game. And think about what is COVID relief and what is just healthy for our community economically going forward. And those are maybe matters that should be funded in any event, but exclusive of a COVID relief fund. So I I threw all of that out, not so much for you, Mr. Given, or for administration, but for for council. I I think this is a really important discussion, and we should narrow what we mean by COVID Relief Reserve funding and those really important economic tools that we could fund independently to stabilize our economic future going forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Demota?
Yeah, you know what, and I appreciate those those additional concepts. You know, there there's also, you know, the thought, and it's included in in some of the ideas here. And, you know, understanding that we're going to be going through a transition in council. And, you know, we've been affected by by this pandemic for six months out of this year, and and there are still going to be some impacts, unforeseen impacts. And, you know, I I would think that even having some of that surplus be considered for the next council to to help deal with adjusting their future budget, because there's going to be some implications that we might not foresee. And I don't think it's fair to to the next council to be strapping them with with, you know, some potential increases going into 2022. So considering that, I I think for the community's health as well, to to maybe consider some, you know, I I wouldn't say padding, but some comfort or support towards the the next requisition coming forward for 2022. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Demota, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor McGrath, Councillor Demota, and and Mayor Ireland. You know, I think all the comments here, you know, it it's challenging, because there is sort of this, there's a whole bunch of things we could do. What is the most meaningful? What is the most impactful? What is the most possible? And how much should we save for later? I mean, that really is absolutely what council should be discussing. And I can appreciate that presented with a long list, although it has some evaluation criteria, it actually takes some time to weigh them against one another. If council was interested, I could share at least how I evaluated them to identify about six first-tier concepts and another five second-tier concepts for council to consider, if that would help narrow the scope. And and again, I appreciate that some of this is subjective and other people may have other priorities. But this might at least help focus the discussion. I believe that the first-tier concepts, using the criteria here and and the matrix, are ones that would be able to be accomplished within this council term or have effective, effectively initiated within this council term and could all be done while still leaving a significant amount of the fund available for future use. So if council's interested, I could share my screen to show how I evaluated these. And that might shorten the discussion, because another thing that council could do would be to direct administration to take this long list away and provide some recommended concepts from. would be to direct administration to take this long list away and provide some recommended concepts from the long list. But I am prepared today to show you at least that initial sort of cut of what what my evaluation would have yielded in terms of first tier and second tier ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any objection to Mr. Given's screen sharing? Councillor Demota, do you have a question?
Well, um, you know, I I think I appreciate that, but after looking at this list, I I thought that that maybe having, you know, outside of committee, the whole is is either holding a special meeting or having council discuss their priorities. And I appreciate the suggestion, but yeah, I was more in in inclined to to have a broader council discussion on on the presentation here. So I'm not opposed to to hearing Mr. Given's recommendations or thoughts. I just, I think it, yeah, I thought it would be a healthier process if if council had a discussion on it first. That's just my opinion, but I'm not objecting.
For recommended process on on how to go through this, does anyone have any recommendations aside from the screen share being presented to us? I'm curious to see what the top six priorities are from administration's perspective. And of course, we have the ability to add our our perspective to this. I I'm super interested in in the rent subsidy. I also agree with Mayor Ireland in targeted measures for those who are disproportionately affected by COVID-19. I love the recommendation or or the idea of a childcare strategy being developed in our community as it's it's certainly something that affects many, many Jasperites. And as we entered into COVID, when I was watching other council meetings in other communities, I was stricken by the fact that we never had a rate stabilization fund and and for this possibly to be the start of a rate stabilization fund for the future is something that I'm super interested in for the community's health. Moving through this with process, any ideas or recommendations? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I I just wanted to share your view that I I too am interested in in hearing how Mr. Given has further categorized some of these options. I I agree with Councillor Demota that this is necessarily going to become a bit of a lengthy discussion. It's not going to get resolved today. I don't think by council it will come back to committee, the whole, and then to council. But in the meantime, the more information we can get to nuance our thinking, the better. So if Mr. Given has something that he can't share, I'd like to find out about that today rather than sometime later because it's going to come forward anyway, and we might as well be informed as soon as we can. So now would be a good time in my view.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given, without any other objections, I think we're safe to ask you to screen share. Thank you.
Sure, Deputy Mayor McGrath, I'll do that. I'll just confirm that council can see my Excel spreadsheet that's here. If I can just get it. Okay, okay. So the first and again, first here concepts based on the fact that they scored what I would call high points in at least four categories. So of out of out of reach, impact, complexity, cost that they received, what I would call a high evaluation, any of those. I came up with advanced advocacy to eliminate land rent. That is something that could be acted on for a relatively low dollar cost that could have significant implications in the community into the future. If council wished, we could consider whether we might be able to include the discussion on resort municipality status in that as well, but you know, certainly different targets. But I would suggest that for under $20,000, we could actively engage some professional support to advance our interest there. And on that item, if we were successful in getting elimination of land rent in some form or other, that would be a return in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so that's why that one is really evaluated fairly highly. That could be started up within the next couple of months, although the results, of course, would take longer. The startup funding for public transportation would have a broad impact, was directly reflected in task force recommendations. And administration is aware that there are options to work with private operators that would be able to start this within the matter of a couple of weeks with a relatively small, again, under under $50,000, I would say, in terms of investment for the first year to get that up and going. There would be a question of the sustainability of that service into the future and whether there would be a need for ongoing investment. But again, that startup funding of under $50,000 to get that service startup this season is possible in administration's view. The labor market analysis, this is the development of of essentially a report looking at the labor market and the barriers in the labor market and recommendations. We would partner with other agencies to do that report. And it would be the type of information that would assist the municipality and its advocacy efforts to other orders of government. It would assist local businesses in their advocacy and efforts to recruit and would probably provide some advice to us, us broadly, the community of Jasper on what we could do in order to improve our labor market and the opportunity for staff is staffing is always evaluated as one of the highest pinch points for local businesses and local business success. A very small one, oh, sorry, and I should say that administration would estimate would be, you know, under the $20,000 mark in terms of investment. The guide to opening a business is a very small matter, but given Jasper's very unique nature and the complexity with parks in the municipality and the different layers of rules, it was identified at the Economic Development Economic Recovery Task Force that there was a need to provide some assistance so that people could understand how to open a business in Jasper. This would be a a small document that we would hire some outside consultant support with. And I would suggest that it would probably be able to be accomplished and delivered within, you know, within one to two months, three at the outside and for a cost of less than $10,000. The development of a community childcare strategy. This is one that would have a community childcare strategy would have a very broad impact and was identified in the Economic Recovery Task Force, childcare was identified as a high priority that impacted both the labor market, the success of businesses, and obviously, you know, general livability for families in the community. Council is also aware that I think we all have ongoing questions about the role of the municipality in providing daycare services. There was also questions raised at the task force about the opportunity for private day homes and how that could be developed. And there are questions that are arising because of the federal government's initiative to create a national childcare strategy. So in the context of all those different moving parts, it would be wise for the community to have a childcare strategy that considered all those different things. This again would be hiring some additional support to augment administration's work to develop that strategy. That work would, you know, take a number of months, but would lay forward recommendations for how we could improve childcare in the community and what role the municipality should actually be playing in childcare going forward. The Community Development Grant Program is a, oh, and I should say on the Community Childcare Strategy, administration's estimation is that that would be in the $30,000 range. The Community Development Grant Program, I think, is a program that many of you are probably familiar with. It did used to exist. There was a recommendation from the task force that the municipality become more directly involved in increasing cultural opportunities within the community. And administrations identified that one potential way to do that would be to restart the Community Development Grant Program. This would be a relatively small amount. My understanding was that it was funded previously on an annual basis for $10,000 or less. And so that would be one that where the municipality could take a supportive role in encouraging and acting as a catalyst to more cultural opportunities within the community if council chose. And, you know, that grant program could be started up relatively easily. To Mayor Ireland's question before, that likely would be an ongoing program for really to be impactful. And so council would need to consider that. But again, a relatively small dollar amount, you know, for in the $10,000 range, that could be up and available to the community in 2021. Council would have to consider sort of the ongoing funding of that. The second tier concepts, the cultural programmer position again would be something that council would need to consider in the context of the fact that it should be in an annual ongoing position. But again, this would reflect the municipality becoming more directly involved in creating and operating cultural opportunities within the community. This was identified in the Economic Recovery Task Force as an opportunity to make Jasper more livable. And it is a a gap within our current organization. We have people focused on recreation facilities and great programming within our recreation facilities. But it appears that we generally leave cultural programming to other organizations, which is a legitimate alternative. But if the municipality wanted to become more directly involved, then you know, the suggestion would be that this position should was be something that could help advance that. There would be an ongoing cost if we were to establish such a position. Administration's view is that that would be all in, including, you know, operating costs for the position, benefits and and salary. That would be under $80,000. We discussed the marketing grants for local businesses. Council could define a pot of money they're willing to do that with and how much any grant could be, you know, you could decide that you have a $10,000 pot of money with grants of up to $500, or you could have a $50,000 pot of money with grants up to $5,000. So it's quite flexible, but we've discussed that previously in response to Councillor Demota's question, the Destination Management Plan. Again, we discussed that in Councillor Demota's question. That one would suggest that the municipality of Jasper's financial investment could be as low as $10,000. It would really be the commitment for the municipality to participate in that process that would that would really initiate it. It could have far-reaching impact, but we, you know, would take some time. And there would be other recommendations that would come out of that Destination Management Plan. And then the final two rated in that second tier are the investment in advancing new housing and the use of funds to buffer future property tax increases or councillor, Deputy Mayor McGrath, you know, a a stabilization fund, as you said. Now, those are rated in the second tier because, not because they would, you know, not be impactful. They both would be very impactful, but they both would require a larger dedication of the funds. And so council may want to consider those two almost on a scale against all of the other ones that are above, where you may want to say, well, how much would we want to set aside to be able to invest in new housing and to buffer future property tax increases compared to all the things above? Based on, you know, a quick, very quick, you know, calculation, you could probably do all of the other items for under $300,000. But the bottom two, you know, you should be setting aside at least half a million for either one of them or both of them. So again, that is my analysis using the matrix that is here, trying to qualify which items had broad impact. Sorry, broad reach, high impact, low complexity, low cost, and were recommended by the task force. So with that, I'm going to stop my screen share so you can all see each other again, and I'll return it back to Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Comments and questions from councillors? Councillor Butler.
I think most of us are probably feeling a little bit like I am. I need some more time to consider to look at these options to take into account what we've just heard from Mr. Given. So I'm very hesitant to start stacking these suggestions in terms of, you know, my priorities or my preferences. So I agree, I think we're going to have to come back to this at a future committee, the whole, when we've had time to mull and think. I'll make a couple of comments about what we've heard. And the first is that I think I am also attracted to the idea of something like a rate stabilization fund that is in effect using these funds to buffer future tax increases. The difficulty we have is the amount of money we have there would not even create a very effective and long-term rate stabilization fund. Just to put it into context, given where our current current size of our tax requisition, a little under $9 million, if and the recommendation that we have from the Recovery Task Force to to do our best to freeze taxes. Even simple cost of living adjustments over the next three years would, if we were to buffer tax increases for the next three years to only some to account for even something only like 3% tax increases, that would eat this fund up in about three years, maybe four if we were really careful. So we don't have the kind of money here to look at an effective tax stabilization fund and look at a lot of the other options there. My other comment would be, I'm very concerned, as I always am, with staying within the realm of municipal governance. So I am very, I have a hard time looking at things like rent subsidies. That is, there are a lot of rent subsidy programs out there. Residential rent subsidy is something that is programmed extensively by the provincial government. Provincial government has at least two ongoing sources of money for rent subsidies. And I'm very hesitant to wade into that realm with the limited amount of money we have here because I am not convinced that we could really be effective. And the cost of implementation, I fear, would be really high in the sense that the only effective way to do that is to have a pretty detailed list of criteria to get into people's personal finances to with the expectation of looking at their income levels, all of that kind of thing. I don't know if we have or if we should have the appetite for that. Similarly, I struggle with the idea of grants, really of any sort. This money belongs to the residents and taxpayers of Jasper. And I struggle with the idea of flat-out grants that simply, you know, give the money, albeit for good purposes. But I'm far more comfortable with looking at mitigating or assuaging areas of municipal fees and services. So we charge fees and services for various things from swimming pools to utilities to daycare. We already dedicated $30,000 to mitigating daycare costs. So I am broadly in favor of looking at businesses and individuals who have been disproportionately affected by COVID and lessening or reducing or crediting municipal fees charged to those people as being a way that we can help and stay within our realm as municipal government governors. So those are a few thoughts I have now, but I do think we need some more time to consider the options here.
Thank you very much, Councillor Butler. Being that we should try and refine or revise this list to have administration bring something back before us at the next committee of the whole meeting. Is there any process that I could go through suggesting maybe even going line by line? And if we're not interested in it as a group, we can at least revise this list and and move forward with a smaller list. Councillor Demota?
Well, I, you know what, I I think I'm I'm more in line to to what Councillor Butler has suggested and I I'd like to, you know, not really say we should have this done by next committee, the whole, because I don't think that we've discussed that collectively. So I don't know where all of council sits on that. So I don't feel like we should be driven to that right away. And, you know, I I want to consider going through these in the same process that I try to consider every decision. And when I do that, it's the three filters. So is it the best thing, you know, how does the community community as a whole benefit from it? What are the costs? And is it the right thing to do? So I want to see like what I want to go through myself and and talk through with council. What are the best things for the community as a whole? What's the better benefit when it comes to, you know, getting the most mileage out of the the funding available or the surplus available? And then what's what are the best things to do for the community? What's the most right? So through that, I'd like to have a little bit more time than just getting this on on Friday and then having the weekend review and then discussing it with you today. than just getting this on on Friday and then having the weekend review and then discussing with you today and coming up with some quick analysis over it. I'd like to have a little bit more time to absorb it and meet with council prior to to forcing any decision in any direction. That's just my opinion, and that's the process I would like to approach.
And for all of council also recognizing that there is only a few months left of this current term, is there anything that we would like to direct administration towards for the next committee of the whole discussion of things that could be higher priority for us? Can we advance discussions at all on this today? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I appreciate where I think you're trying to take us on this and to to help ourselves and to help the administration. And having listened earlier to councillor Butler, I share some of those views. I would say administration has done a great service with the category list on the extreme left. And so just by category, I would favor further discussion about utility rate credits. There's, I think there's potential in that tax mitigation. There is potential in that discussion. Public infrastructure is something to which I think we should be committed with or without a COVID relief fund. So I would I would not be personally inclined to have much more discussion about public infrastructure. Transportation is one where although that might be public infrastructure in some senses, I think there is a real opportunity there. So I would invite further discussion on that. Grants, I agree essentially with councillor Butler that that is not where I would like to focus our discussions right now. The next one is fees, but I would see that as fee credits or something of that nature. So similar to utility tax credits, I think, and could be discussed further. Housing, again, I don't think there's enough money here that we can seriously look at that, but we are looking at housing independently of COVID relief. So I think that could not be lost to council but come off this list. Economic development, that's exactly what this is about. So those ones might stay. And then others, and while I appreciate there's interest in particularly a childcare strategy, again, I think that could be something that is supported by council independent of a COVID relief strategy, but whether that makes it or not can be up to council, but I would narrow the list in that fashion to give us something a little less broad to dig into on the next occasion.
Any discussion on those points raised by Mayor Ireland specifically indicating the utility rates and and fees, taxes, transportation and economic development? Councillor Butler?
I agree with prioritizing the list that way or narrowing the list that way, essentially with everything that Mayor Ireland said. Would like to add one thought, though. The top two categories of utility rate credits. Utility fees are one of the very important fees that we charge and where we have discretion. And I know there's been impact. Because some of the utility fees are payable, whether businesses are busy or not busy or are open or even not open. And I think it really is an area where we can afford to look. Would add to that, though, that particularly for families in the community, as has been discussed many times, we are here to talk about COVID relief. Mental health is has always has for the past fifteen months been been an issue. We, I think there are barriers to participating in recreation activities, taking advantage of our facilities that some feel. What it costs to go to the swimming pool, what it costs to play hockey, these sorts of things. And we might consider while looking at utility fees, and I hate to broaden the scope, but we might want to look at whether for some people help with, I don't know, some sort of credits for facility fees and so on over the next year might help people to to come back. Some would be affected by utility fee credits, but not all residents even pay their own utilities. Some renters don't. But I keep hearing of cost barriers to taking advantage of our recreation facilities. And we might look at that in addition to utility fees.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Mr. Given?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor McGrath. Appreciate the discussion. I would just refocus council's attention to the recommendation that started the report. It was that committee direct administration to further refine the following concepts and return to future committee of the whole meeting. Mayor Ireland specified some categories, that would be fine. But if council wanted to do that, committee wanted to do that in a form of a motion. That's exactly where administration was headed, asking you to specify which ones you wanted us to do some more work on or provide some some greater level of detail for your consideration. And if Mayor Ireland or any other council member wanted to do that using the the starting part of the motion that we have there and substituting, you know, the ending by by sort of a bullet point list of the categories that you'd like us to revise or narrow the scope down to, that would be very helpful to administration. Otherwise, it is not clear what is supported by a majority of council members, because we haven't heard from all council members on the discussion. And so an endorsement of a narrowing, you know, makes that, you know, legitimate. Otherwise, it's been some discussion and administrations picking and choosing who we're we're hearing from. It's actually the vote of the committee that says, yes, we agree, this is the narrowed scope that we want to see more information on. And that's what administration would act on. Otherwise, we're just picking and choosing what we think we heard.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor Demota?
Well, I would recommend then taking this as information and then getting together with council at a future date and then providing recommendations going forward. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Demota. I could agree with the list that Mayor Ireland presented with the addition of some of the others. I don't want to lose sight. And I don't want to lose focus on something like a community childcare strategy, though I understand it not being placed in here. I would maybe agree to to it not being included in this list if we could assure ourselves that it's going to be an item of further discussion at a committee of the whole and that we would consider allocating municipal dollars to a strategy such as that, because I know it's so meaningful to the Jasperites who live in our community and and require childcare. It's certainly a big part of recovery and a huge part of developing community resiliency. So any further discussion? Is there any councillor prepared to make a motion? Councillor Demota and Mayor Ireland?
I'm making a motion. I'd like that committee of the whole defer recommendations to the next committee of the whole meeting on the use of the COVID relief reserve.
Thank you, councillor Demota. And is there any clarification questions or debate on the motion? I personally would like to move us a little bit further than just simply deferring to the next committee of the whole, though I understand if if council as a whole does not have enough information and enough time to make an informed decision, that's that's certainly important. If there are no questions or no debate, oh, sorry, councillor Keller-Hramby?
I like the, what Mayor Ireland and councillor Butler said about making the list shorter, but there's nothing stopping us, even at the next committee of the whole, of something on or taking something off. So some councillors have indicated that Mayor Ireland here today, where they'd like to see it go. And if we put that as the top of the list and then leave all the others as consideration at the bottom, then we balance it, right? This is what we're going to focus on. However, we maybe after thinking about it for two weeks, we might want to add something back in. So we could just split the list with what Mayor Ireland indicated and what councillor Butler indicated, and then leave the rest at the bottom of the list. And then it's still there, but we can give priority to the top. And then if somebody at that time chooses, oh, they want priority to one of the other items on the list, we can move it up.
Thank you, councillor Keller-Hramby.
Might be.
Sorry, and Mayor Ireland, you did have your hand up. That was for a motion, I believe. Did you want to weigh into this debate?
Yes, well, I wanted, I had my hand up. Thank you for that. Just because I thought that there might have been a motion implicit in councillor Demota's earlier remarks. So that's fair. He's got that motion clearly on the the table now, and you will soon call the question. And I share the view of councillor Keller-Hramby has just expressed that I would like to refine this to give administration a specific task for next time we meet. That doesn't mean that anything is gone for good. It just means that for the time being they will refine with respect to certain items. So rather than defer even that amount to work, I would be opposed to councillor Demota's motion. And then, well, we'll just see how that goes. But then I would have a subsequent motion if necessary after that.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Demota?
Yes, if no one else has anything to add, I'd like to close off. Just, you know, like to give councillor Wilson an opportunity to weigh in. So I was just going to recommend that councillors come back with where their priorities are with the recommendations that came forward and and the rest on the list overall, and maybe, you know, any other ideas that they might have for the next committee of the whole. So I still sit with my motion.
Thank you, councillor Demota, for what you called closing, though I see councillor Butler's hand, so I will acknowledge it.
Well, oh, that's all right. Debate is closed. I'll pass. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Butler. I will call the question. All in favor? That is two councillors in favor and any opposed? That's four opposed. That motion is defeated. Mayor Ireland, would you like to present a motion? And I will call a recess soon, just so everyone is aware.
Thank you. I will make a motion that committee of the whole direct to further refine the following concepts. Committee of the whole meeting and those. I'm sorry?
If you wouldn't mind, maybe even trying to turn off your camera while you speak the motion, your your voice was lost a little too much.
My apologies. You can perhaps nod to let me know that you can hear me now.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I will make a motion that committee of the whole direct administration to further refine the following concepts and return to a future committee of the whole meeting. And those concepts will be utility rate credits, tax mitigation, transportation, fees, including recreational fees, and economic development.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. We heard you perfectly clear. Any debate on the motion that was presented by Mayor Ireland? Councillor Butler?
Yeah, thanks for that. And generally, I agree. And I will offer this perspective. Every idea on here is a really good idea. Some of them are things we should be doing anyway. Some of them are things that aren't particularly COVID related, but the COVID lens has highlighted the importance of them. So we should be doing them. So by not by dropping something off the list here, that should not be interpreted as meaning we don't see them as priorities to continue to go forward with. But we have made the commitment that we see this fund as a targeted COVID relief fund. So while some of the broader implicated implication items here are great thoughts and good ideas, they're less targeted and therefore perhaps things that we shouldn't be really looking at under the umbrella of targeted relief. So I'm in favor of taking this opportunity to shorten the list a little and refine it on the basis of the motion.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Councillor Demota?
Well, although I do appreciate the recommendations, you know, something that that I feel continually falls off, you know, our attention is, is, you know, some of our basic services, and that includes, you know, streets. And I feel that our downtown core takes quite a beating and gets neglected. And there are certain things that keep getting pushed down the road because we don't either, we either don't have the funding or the time to take care of it. And I think that some of our downtown core streets and alleys have, you know, keep getting, you know, put aside, I think. And it's no neglect from operations or anything like that from, but from the the overall scope and our observation, I feel that we don't pay enough attention towards that. And I think that I'd like to have that added to the area of focus here just for discussion. And, you know, if it ends up not being an issue, I just, I feel that you know, it does get raised quite often, and I think that we're missing out on an opportunity here to, you know, have pay a little bit more attention to that. So I guess that would be a I'd be asking to add that to Mayor Ireland's list. But if he doesn't want to, that's fine.
I will. You know, then sorry, Mayor Ireland and then councillor Jurnau.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I'll turn off my camera again, maybe. Just, just to reply to councillor Demota. Should we be investing in capital refurbishment of the CBD? Absolutely. I agree that we should. I just don't think that it is a relevant expenditure or an appropriate expenditure of COVID relief funds. I I fully agree that we should focus on that. And we've heard that now in two reports, one from the Economic Recovery Task Force, the other from the report from Community Futures West Yellowhead. That is an ongoing thing. It would swallow every bit of the one point one million dollars that we have in the COVID relief reserve. In any event, I don't disagree at all that it is a matter of importance for council to consider. I just don't think it fits with my view of why we've established a COVID relief fund. But I'm just included at this time, specific to this endeavor as indicated.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. Yes, you may.
Okay, so the the whole concept for me for getting that extra most funding was because we were recognized as a resort destination area. And we got, we got extra money because we have demands put on our community because of visitation. And I feel that, you know, our streets, particularly in the downtown core, whether it's from visitors or, you know, service delivery trucks that hammer alleyways and things like that, and just having that overall presentation that we are often limited to get external funding sources and having to rely on our local taxpayers to to help facilitate our visitation. We specifically got money because we're a visitation destination. And that's why the the whole that extra three million dollars came because we were a resort municipality. And that, I feel, would be a proper use of that extra money, which, you know, came through as most, and now we have the surplus because of that. And I still think that it's a valid thing to to consider. And especially because it came from the Economic Recovery Task Force and that it's been a non- And especially because it came from the Economic Recovery Task Force and that it's been an ongoing issue in our community for, for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. I didn't want to miss. Counselor Jono had his hand up quite some time ago.
Yes, thank you. I have lots to say, but I'm going to try and limit it here very, very briefly. I think that the items that are in here should be COVID relief only. We can mix in a lot of things, and we do have a lot of things need attention. I'm not all that supportive of this because it's more social in nature than the basics of municipal governance. Our municipal government starts with roads and then goes with water sewer, and we seem to be neglecting those things to get into social programs. But that's important because that's how we get elected, you know, elected by fixing roads. So I, I'm, I'm very, very mixed on this. I would like to see this, this list narrowed as, as little as possible and put some money towards our, our basic needs for the community. Counselor Demola, Demota alluded to that. And the alleys, for example, is, is one item. It's not, not hard. It's not complicated. It's simply loving leveling the bumps. But we seem to be neglecting that because we're anxious to go into funding for social programs. So that's just a comment that I want to make. But I don't, I, I think we're neglecting our basic requirements, our basic attention to the operations of our town.
Thank you, Counselor Jono. Is there any other further debate on Mayor Ireland's motion? Counselor Keller-Herempe.
My understanding of Mayor Ireland's motion is that the items that he put in his motion that we're going to get further information on, everything else will still be on the list. So there's nothing stopping us from discussing our infrastructure as part of the list at the next committee of the whole either. So I think it'll still be there. If we still have further information and the rest of the list, I think as councillor, we can choose if Counsel Demota and Counsel Jono will bring up those topics that we can discuss them at that time also.
Thank you, Counselor Keller-Herempe. Counselor Butler.
You know, the concerns around infrastructure are, are valid and are not being discounted by anyone. What we come down, what we're coming to is, I think, a core question principle of what we intend with this money. If councillors think that notwithstanding current COVID realities, the highest priority the community faces is improvements and upgrades and maintenance of infrastructure. And it's a valid point. I, I don't quibble with it. But if that's what we think, then really what we ought to do is dedicate this money to mitigating future tax increases and continue as we have been in this past budget and budgets before to do our best to commit ourselves to infrastructure improvements, because that is just what municipalities do, as I pointed out. And if that's what we think is the highest priority, then we may as well just use this as a tax stabilization fund and increase our emphasis on infrastructure upgrades and improvements and maintenance in the coming years. So it's just that we can't have it both ways. This is a million dollars. This is a bit of pavement. This is not a big number relative to infrastructure improvements and upgrades. To say, oh, well, let's use a little bit of it to improve the downtown core is honestly it's so meaningless. It's posturing. And I'm not accusing anyone of posturing, but we, we just can't do it all. If infrastructure is where we think the greatest needs of the community are, to help this community advance and recover from the blow of COVID, then we should use it as a tax stabilization fund and advance our efforts to address infrastructure. So I'm still in favor of the motion. But let's be clear that we can't do it all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demota. Mayor Ireland, do you wish to close debate?
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor. No, I, I don't need an opportunity to close. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. There are none opposed. Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, for moving us forward with your motion. And thank you to administration for all of their work in presenting us what they provided us today. Counselor Demota.
Yeah, I just, you know what? I just, I want to thank Counselor Butler for, for making a good point there. And, and that's why I, I did vote in favor because, you know what? We can't have both. But, you know, and, and to just excuse the, maybe the perception of posturing, I know that I wasn't you know, accused of that. But and I see how it can come across that way. It's just, I just don't, don't want those things or people in the community to feel that those are getting neglected because it has been brought up a few times. And, and I think it's important. And even if it does, you know, get involved down the road with some sort of future tax relief, I think just having the conversation is helpful. So I appreciate all the discussion and debate today, and I think it's healthy for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demota. One thing that I do not want to lose sight of from this conversation and understanding that it might not reach a, a high priority from the conversations and the motion that just passed is the childcare strategy. I'm, I'm curious if council as a whole would be supportive of directing administration to follow up at a future committee of the whole presenting us with ideas for a community-wide childcare strategy. If there's any opposition of seeing that in the future on an agenda. Counselor Keller-Herempe.
I support that coming back at a later committee of the whole, depending on the workload that council administration has. Childcare is important to our community and for currently municipal childcare, and there seems to be a demand for more home daycare. And there's also seem to be demand from our businesses for weekend childcare. So I think it would be an interesting strategy for our community, for our residents, and for our workers.
Thank you, Counselor Keller-Herempe. Counselor Demota.
Yes, I appreciate you keeping it on the radar. And I, I think that we should put a little bit more discussion and thought behind it. So thank you for keeping it relevant and on topic. So I'm, I'm, I'm for discussing this down the road for sure. Maybe the next committee will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. There's certainly no intention of rushing this to have it on the next committee of the whole meeting, but I, I do think that it's important for us to to stay on this topic as it's presented to us. And, and as I've mentioned, it, it's very meaningful to our community. It comes up in every single community conversation that I've attended for the past four years. And it's, it's really important work. Mr. Given, you had your hand raised.
But just as a matter of process, Deputy Mayor McGrath is the chair of the committee. I don't believe you can make motions. So I'm just wondering if any of the other council members were actually making that as a motion of direction to administration to help you out? Or if there's just sort of a feeling that that's a good idea, it'd be helpful to administration if there's some clarity of whether that was actually direction to us to bring it forward at some future point.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Is there a councillor willing to make that motion? Sorry, Mayor Ireland has his hand up?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I can make that recommendation. I know that I, I mentioned that specifically when I first ran through the list before I made my motion. I, I am prepared to make the motion, but I don't want that to discount the possibility that this might get elevated again next week to the list, because nothing has been dropped from the list, as we have explained. So administration has been directed to refine some of the concepts, but hasn't been directed to eliminate anything. So I, I am prepared to make a motion that at some point council, or pardon me, that council direct administration to return with a refinement with respect to the development of a community childcare strategy. But I don't want that to be interpreted as saying that it could not still be part of the COVID relief fund. I'm not sure that it will be, but I welcome the discussion without the detail next week again. Or next.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Ireland. And with this motion on the table, is there any debate on the motion, Counselor Demota?
No, either way, I was just going to say I would even be comfortable with the councillors such as yourself. If there's no motion today that puts it as a topic of discussion for the next committee of the whole or a future committee of the whole, there's nothing preventing a councillor from wanting to do, introduce something. And then, you know, asking for, you know, council to, to explore and direct administration collectively towards pursuing something outside of the COVID relief funding. I think it's a valid conversation to have. And regardless if it takes place next week or, or the week after, I, you know, always, I think every councillor should feel free to, to bring a, a thought together and, and for, you know, getting, gaining some consensus or greater thought on what we should do for the community or what the community might need. So I'm open to, to all forms of discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demota. I think this, this way about the process is, is very streamlined for administration to stay on top of. And so it makes the motion action follow-up list and and so that we can follow process that we've been following. Is there any other debate on Mayor Ireland's motion? I'll call the question. All in favor? And there are none opposed. Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, for your motion. Thank you for council. And being that it's 11:12, I believe we are due for a recess. Counselor Butler, I acknowledge you before we recess.
Thanks very much. I'd just like to, to quick step back and try to rectify something. I'm feeling very badly that I may have implied that those couple of councillors who were speaking in favor of of infrastructure improvements with this money were, were posturing. I, I didn't mean that. What I meant to suggest is that if we as council, you know, sort of try to do everything with this money, we'll be engaging in sort of a tokenism. Well, a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, to try to make it look like we're doing good things when we don't really have that much money. We can't do everything. So if I implied that one is posturing here, I sincerely apologize. I did not mean to imply that at all. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, for your thanks for your intentional response. It's, it's really important to seek clarification when, when necessary. And it's 11:13. I will call recess until 11:20 a.m. See you back here at 11:20. There is Mayor Ireland. Perfect. So we are all back. Counselor Demota, if you wouldn't mind turning on your screen. And Mayor Ireland is there. Thank you very much. It's 11:21, and I will call us back to order. Before us is agenda item number 8.3, the municipal face covering mandates. Who would like to take us through this? Is that you, Mayor Ireland, coming off mute to speak to this?
Yes, I, I think it should be. It was something that I had asked be brought forward for today. The, the first item, the notice of motion presented today, just in the event any councillor feels a need for further clarification or discussion with the intent that this would be back for motion before us one week from now at our, at our next regular public meeting. And the, the other though is a motion to direct administration to present a bylaw for first, second, and potentially third reading at our next regularly scheduled meeting, and that is to deal with our, the proposed, at least repeal of the temporary compulsory face covering bylaw and the amendment that we made to it in the fall. So for that one, I, I can at this time make a motion that council so direct administration so that we have a bylaw before us next week for debate. I know that the things are still evolving in, in this field. There's, there's news today about doctors suggesting that masking continue even when we get into stage three. I have brought it forward only so that our council can be positioned to be prepared and intentionally enter that ground when the province hits stage three. So there's no need to, in my view, to debate the issue before it comes forward by way of a bylaw next week. But again, I don't want to deny any councillor an opportunity to speak to the matter. So it is here for motion, and I've made that motion. And I think it's important that we deal with it intentionally, whatever we might decide next week in terms of repealing that particular bylaw. So I will consider that I have made the motion and spoken to it. And the other, the notice of motion is just for information. Perhaps be discussed again once we clear the issue on the motion. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor Ireland. Any debate on the motion Mayor Ireland has presented? Hearing nothing, I will call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, as discussed last week, for having the foresight to bring that forward to council in, in a timely manner. Moving on to agenda item number 8.4, appointments to the Regional Assessment Review Board.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor McGrath. There is, of course, Mr. Don who can provide additional detail. I think council members are aware of this. This is essentially a housekeeping item as a part of our participation in the Regional Assessment Review Board. The municipality of Jasper is, must appoint board members from time to time and designate a chair from time to time. And we must also designate clerk on an annual basis to meet the requirements of the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw. So we have two recommendations for you to bring to forward on to council. First is that the council appoint Michelle DeShane as the designated clerk and the council appoint Counselor Butler as the designated chair. So these are essentially required under the bylaw. It's basically our turn in terms of the chair. And so these two motions are here for committee to recommend forward to council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Is there any questions for administration on this agenda item? Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much. I am completely confused because it's not our turn. I was chair last year and Mr. Shane was the sorry, the clerk last year. So I'm pretty confused, and I wonder if someone can help me understand why we're back again. I don't mind. It's not a big problem for me, but if we're doing it this way, then we're actually not following the bylaw that the very, that the three communities have mutually passed.
Deputy Mayor McGrath, it's highly likely that I confuse the issue. I wouldn't put it, put it out of, out of the realm of possibility. And so maybe we can refer to Ms. Nedon to clarify, provide the clarification that Council Butler is looking for.
Ms. Nedon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. This is a bit of a, an interesting situation. This, this was the information that was provided to us by our Assessment Review Board clerk. So I assumed that this was the recommendation of the committee that is formed of all the clerks in the region, who is the body that is responsible for bringing forward those recommendations. But having that said, the fact that you're unaware of this recommendation, Counselor Butler, certainly makes me think twice about whether this is the right course of action or not. We're here for committee of the whole, so this gives us an opportunity to, to perhaps investigate a bit further before asking council to, to pass a motion. So I'm, I think the answer is we'll have to go back and, and, and check with the staff that are directly involved. And like I said, the request came from them, but there, there's a potential for a, an error in process here. So I'd like to take the time to get through it before we ask council to do anything.
Yep. Would the proper course of action for administration be to simply defer this to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Deputy Mayor McGrath, rather than defer maybe the council table consideration of the recommendation to the next committee of the whole meeting, and during that tabling, so the tabling is date-specific. So the tabling is date specific, next committee of the whole meeting, and that a council would consider it at that time. That tabling would allow administration to get the additional clarity that's required, provide that at at the next committee of the whole meeting. And if there's a different course of action, we can recommend that to councillor, advise council that. And then council could consider this recommendation in context of that additional information if there is any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given, and thank you, Ms. Nedon. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I'm not sure whether there is any sensitivity to the decision date that is on. The request for decision today. It is June fifteenth. But procedurally, I would be content. If this matter comes back to council. On June fifteenth for decision without a recommendation in advance from committee of the whole. If there is a time sensitivity, if if it can legitimately wait until another committee of the whole meeting, that's fine. But if. If we have to make a decision and we're held up by this, I would be perfectly comfortable. Dealing with. A decision a week from now based on updated information rather than have this languish.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. Ms. Nedon has her hand.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I am getting information from from the team as. As this process is unfolding and from working on this report at the end of last week, I do recall that the town of Edson. Provided clerking services last year and essentially. The way it works, because we're part of a regional approach, there's a designated clerk in each municipality. I'll take that back, not designated. There is a clerk in each municipality. The designated clerk acts as the coordinator for the region. So essentially, we pool board members. And the designated clerk is responsible for looking at the schedule and scheduling the hearings, and then the work takes place in each municipality. But essentially. We do have information that. Edson was the had the designated clerk position and Hinton was the chair is the information I'm getting. So. I would support, not that it's my position to support, but what Mayor Ireland suggested that if we could come back next week with. Having that information confirmed, it is a bit of a housekeeping item, but it has an impact on our ability and the region's ability. To schedule Assessment Review Board hearings. Therefore, that June fifteenth decision date is is a bit time sensitive. So. With council's permission, I would like to request that process be in place if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Nedon. Councillor Butler had his hand up, and I believe Mr. Given wanted to speak to this as well.
Sure, let's just hear from Mr. Given first. Thanks.
Yeah, I think first council appreciate we need to provide some additional clarity. We can do that between now and the next council meeting. So if the. Motion was to table, you know, refer consideration. Of this, these recommendations to the next council committee of the whole, or sorry, next council meeting. That would also give administration time to find. Provide additional clarity. I just would, the other thing that I was going to say is in the bylaw, it does note under ten point two. That the designated clerk, whenever possible, shall be selected from the same municipality as designated chair. So it's possible there's a bit of a of a of a tying of those two positions going on. But whatever the case is. If council wishes to refer this matter to the next regular council meeting. Administration will provide the additional clarity that's required. So that there is no confusion when council is asked to consider this, and that way we would be able to meet the timelines as highlighted by Ms. Nedon.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor Butler.
Thanks very much. I I think I misspoke. I was not. The years fade one into another. At one point, I think I was not chair. And Mr. Shane clerk last year, it was the before. I I'm pretty sure, and and I do realize that administration will look into this. The only reason I'm bringing this up is that while being chair is not. Time on earth, it's not particularly significant, but being designated clerk actually carries a fairly significant workload. And I think we've missed a rotation. The bylaw specifies that it should be rotated among the communities. There are three communities, and I I'm pretty sure. That we've missed a rotation, and if there's a reason and intent there, I I don't object, but being clerk. Is a time commitment, and therefore the intent of the bylaw is that it is rotated among the three communities. So every. Community bears the cost of that additional time commitment bears their fair share. And I would just like to be assured that we are. Following with intent and not. There is a reason that we are skipping generation, as I think that we are, though I can't completely sure. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Butler, for that clarification. Ms. Nedon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath, through to councillor Butler and and the rest of council. This regional approach is to ensure that we are able to provide the services that were mandated to provide under. Provincial legislation, and. That is the very reason why we are in a regional approach is that sometimes some communities are not in a position to provide a clerk. So, for example, last year, someone was appointed, and then that person ended up leaving the position. So another community had to step up and provide the designated clerking services because the the capacity was simply not there. And similarly to board members. How many board members are qualified and appointed in each municipality? Jasper is quite strong in that area. So we are. Pulling our share of the work with that regional board, and then at times we may not be in that position, and then other communities can step in. So there is a bit of a balance to be found there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nedon. All right. So do I have a councillor prepared to make a motion to refer these recommendations to the regular meeting on June fifteenth for consideration? Mayor Ireland, thank you for the motion. I will call the question unless there's some debate. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much to administration for the work in this, and we will look forward to hearing further next Tuesday. Agenda item number eight point five added by councillor Demota brings us to a skate park update. Councillor Demota.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to get an update where we're at. I know that, you know, on February second, council had. Committed support to this gate part up up to a certain amount and. The, you know, I just. Even though that the skate park committee is external from council, we had committed to to provide some support financially, and and you know, those are community dollars. Understanding that there's a deadline for submission for the CFAP grant next Tuesday, which is June fifteenth. So and I know that we've committed to supporting some administration. Time in there with the the grant writing and. I just thought it'd be a good opportunity now, giving it a week away to to update the community on on where we're at from from our perspective, from municipal perspective. And so if if Mr. Given is ready, I'd like to. Get a brief update on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor McGrath and councillor Demota for the question. So yes. Administration has been supporting Mr. Savage in his efforts. I spoke to him most recently on Friday of last week. Just about an update in terms of a check in on how things are going with the development. And he's confident and comfortable that the application will go in on time. Ms. Waxer has also been supporting by reviewing that. We know that in her area. She's very familiar with applying for grants and has been highly successful in that. And so we've provided that additional support. To Mr. Savage to review the application for its completeness and positioning. My understanding is that the skate park committee has continued to work with New Line. The designer to refine the design and see if it will fit. So refine the fit to the other potential location. And with respect to the public engagement, the council directed on the the diamond diamond day. Location, I make sure I got my diamonds right. That that public engagement just closed on June second. The intention from administration was to have that back at the next regular committee of the whole meeting for June twenty second. So we'll provide council some information about that. The approach that we're supporting Mr. Savage with is really independent of the location. We have already provided a letter of support confirming that the municipality will provide the land for this gate park. The CFAP grant is, you know, the the specific land is not a requirement. It is that there is a specific commitment to provide land that has been forwarded, and that is included in the application. And in terms of the final cost, of course, we do not yet know the final cost of the development. And so Mr. Savage is working with the costs that are known today. With the intent of ensuring that we can secure. The CFAP grant rather than essentially moving the goalposts on ourself and artificially afflating the cost when we really don't know what they're going to arrive at. And so Mr. Savage is proceeding with the information that he knows today rather than with the refined revised twenty twenty two design, which isn't yet complete and hasn't been tendered. And so we believe that everything is in order. It is, you know, the dependent, I guess, on whether or not the application receives support from the CFAP grant program, whether it would not, whether or not it would go ahead. We would not be in a position to know that until later this year. And at that time, the skate park committee would have to review how much money, if any, was received from CFAP. And the results of that CFAP grant would really determine whether or not there might be an additional request for for money from the municipality or from the community. But those are things that we can't know at this time. I'm very confident that Mr. Savage has done a fantastic job with the support of our municipal team of developing the application. In the best way to give it the best chance of being successful. The but the determination of success obviously doesn't lie with us. It's ultimately the provincial government when they review that application, but on time. In the queue and hopefully successful because it was developed so well by Mr. Savage and his team.
So I had councillor Demota.
Yeah, I really appreciate that that follow up and and that information is great. It's crucial, and I think it's important, you know, at least to get out there. To the community to know that, you know, we're we're helping progress the steps here and, you know, eventually, regardless of of where this lands and and we get a new skate park, it does become a municipal asset. And, you know, there's care and maintenance that that comes into that. And, you know, we've made financial commitments to that. So that, you know, that's why I was, it does have some budgetary concerns, and and I thought that would be important to address as well. So having said that, I'm very happy with the information we received. So I appreciate the administration time and Mr. Given's time and the rest of council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Anything further on agenda item number eight point five? I think a special shout out of gratitude to Mr. Savage, his entire team, as well as Mr. Given and his team, Mrs. Waxer helping in the grant writing processes. We know very well in our community that there's no one better to to assist in a grant writing application. Than Mrs. Waxer and her team. So thank you to all of the work behind the scenes that's been going on for not months, but for so many years. If there's nothing further for agenda item number eight, we'll move to agenda item number nine, correspondence, and I believe we have no correspondence for today's meeting. Agenda item number ten is our motion action list, and as we can see in our agenda, there are updates and amendments to the motion action list. And by way of process at our committee of the whole meetings, we like to have a motion ready to accept the amended motion action list. Mr. Given.
Two additional items, Deputy Mayor McGrath, that administration would suggest could be removed. First, the review of the draft management plan for Jasper National Park that was delivered today, June eighth, as promised. And then so that one could be deleted, and the COVID relief restricted reserve, that could be deleted. Because it will be replaced with the motion that came forward today. So those, in addition to the date changes that you'll see above. We would further advise that those two items could be deleted, recognizing that at least one of them would be replaced by. The motion that came forward today, and the others in terms of shifting the dates. These are a reflection of the workload within administration where we're currently in the process of conducting a bylaw, undertaking some major capital projects and and a number of other items. And so our commitment to you is that we will reflect our workload and our ability to complete the items, but we will never lose any of your items that you make a motion on. They will always be here. If there's a point where council says, now, wait a minute, this is getting too long, that needs to be a higher priority, it needs to come sooner than you're predicting. Then now would be the time to say so. And to have the discussion about, well, what other things should we defer or should we delete later? But just again, in terms of. Reflecting what this process intended to do, hopefully council is confident that if you've made a motion, it is here, we will not lose it. And we will keep you informed about our progress on it or where it lies in the relative priority. And that's why I feel comfortable in advising council when we're looking for additional time. It is a reflection of the workload of what's happening on in the background, behind the scenes, all the other work that's going on. So with the date changes and those two deletions, that would be administration's recommendation for updates to the motion action list.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Is there a councillor prepared to make the motion of the amendments and the deletion of the draft management plan, park management plan and COVID relief reserve? Councillor Keller-Hramby, thank you. Do you wish to speak to the motion? Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I I just wanted to confirm with respect to. The review of the draft. Park management plan that is coming off. Is that replaced with anything? We we still have an outstanding completion that is some sort of response, and. Will that be tracked independently, or is that just something that we have left? With administration to get that response out. I I just can't remember how we we finalized that discussion, even though it was just a couple of hours ago.
Mr. Given.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor McGrath for Mayor Ireland. Yeah, it's been a busy morning. So the the reason that I'm suggesting that it could be taken off is because committee has received administration's. Recommendation for input. Committee has revised that recommendation for input and will. Choose whether or not to forward it on to Parks Canada at the next regular council meeting. So since it's off to the regular council meeting, I'm suggesting that it can come off the list. If at the regular council meeting, council chooses to do something different, then that item would show up on the on the list. But, you know, administration. Said that we would deliver on June eighth, our recommendation for input. We've done so. Council will take it up at the committee meeting, or sorry, at the council meeting, and so we suggested it could come off.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Anything further before I call the question? All in favor of the amendments to the motion action follow up list and the included deletions? Thank you. That is carried. There are none opposed. Item number eleven, council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I just want to alert you specifically and other members of council and administration that. I believe I will not be available to attend. The committee of hall meeting on June twenty second. I I may have an opportunity to call in from elsewhere, but I I cannot make that promise. So assume that I will not be here.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. Any other reports? Councillor Butler.
Thank you very much. I will be attending as chair the a regular Evergreens Foundation meeting, board meeting on Thursday.
Thank you, councillor Butler. If there are no other reports, I will report that I will be in attendance at the community conversation tomorrow, and there is an inclusion meeting with the municipality. On Friday morning of this week. And if there are no other reports for council representation, we'll move to agenda item number twelve, upcoming events. The lone standing event on June nineteenth of Community Future West Yellowhead Lemonade Day. And a really great opportunity to go through the the full process of of getting business license so that business. That business guide would have been handy for the the children in the community because they have to go to Parks Canada and get a business license and and the municipal office and get a business license. So it's. that business guide would have been handy for the the children in the community because they have to go to Parks Canada and get a business license and and the municipal office and get a business license. So it's it's quite a real introduction to what little entrepreneurship is. And we will be moving in camera. There would possibly be reason to stay in meeting beyond four hours. Do I have a councillor prepared to make a motion consenting that we move beyond four hours in camera if the situation arises? Mayor Ireland, thank you. All in favor to move beyond four hours in camera? And that is carried. Sorry, councillor Butler. We will be moving into camera and there will be no further business when we come out of camera, just for the public who are tuning into today's meeting. So once we're in camera and we do move back out of camera and revert to open meeting, we will just be adjourning the meeting. So there will be no reason to to stick around to the very end of our meeting. We thank you very much for being in attendance today. Council, we do need to decide what time we will resume our in camera. If there's a desire to move right into camera or if we should take a break first and nourish ourselves for lunch. What's the recommendation? Councillor Demoda?
I move for twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty? Yep, twelve thirty sounds fair.
Or is one o'clock better for everybody? I was just throwing it out there. Twelve thirty? Because it's not time. Walk the dogs.
Yeah, that sounds perfect. A forty minute nourishing break and then coming back into camera. Being that we will resume at twelve thirty in camera. Do I have a motion to move in camera at eleven fifty AM? Thank you, councillor Demoda. All in favor? That is carried. So we are now in camera. Thank you very much to everyone who attended our meeting this morning. And we will see you on Tuesday, June fifteenth for our regular meeting.
Good job, boss.
Thanks, everyone.